Okay, let's call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting, Monday, May 15th. It is our regular council meeting and we're going to start with announcements. So, under announcements, I'd like to congratulate all of the 2019 Wemba- Wemba- Wemba finalists. Congratulations to Passion Beauty Salon, who has been the recipient of the Business of the Year. Very excited there. And Wort, Mormon Emergency Response Team. They are the nonprofit of the year. And Home- Mormon Home Center is the Community Envolvement Award. And in Martinsville, we have Bravo Dance Company. They're the new business of the year. And Team Iron Alice Personal Training is Customer Service Award. So that's the 2019 Wemba- Wemba Awards. So congratulations to every one of them. And also all the nominees in each category. I would also like to thank Mormon High School and Sarah Jar- I think it's Gerard.
Gerard.
Gerard, grade nine students from the Indigenous Social Justice Art Class for providing us this beautiful artwork that's behind you there. She's been- they've been working on that. They first connected a few months ago to see if we would adorn our walls with their work. And I'm glad that we did. It looks good. Does anyone else have any announcements they wanted to share? Okay, hearing none, we'll move down to approval of the agenda.
I move to council approval agenda for May 13th, 2019.
Please, we have seconded for that. Council Phil Chuck, is there any changes? Not? All in favor? Okay, moving to approval of minutes.
The Chair, I'd like to make that motion. The motion being that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on April 15th, 2019, and also the regular meeting of council held on April 22nd, 2019 be taken as read and adopted.
Okay. Seconded for that. Council Peterson, is there any errors or omissions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we can move into a public hearing. A public hearing to hear comments on proposed bylaw 2019-07, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2018-08, the official community plan. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Bylaw 2019-07, a bylaw to amend the official community plan. This amendment will change the land use designation map referred to in bylaw number 2018-05 by re-designating a part of parcel A, Plan 90S 31516 from the urban holdings to commercial. And if there is no comments, I move to close that hearing. Okay, another public hearing. To hear comments on the proposed bylaw 2019-06, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2018-06, the zoning bylaw, bylaw 2019-06, a bylaw to amend bylaw number 2018-06, known as a zoning bylaw by rezoning a part of parcel A, Plan 90S 31516 from urban holdings to C2 shopping center. Is there any comments there? Hearing none, I close that hearing and move to administration reports, starting with planning and development.
Thank you, Mayor Spence, members of council. Planning and development has received a request to subdivide a portion of the Saskatoon site located along Centennial Boulevard for the purpose of constructing a commercial building. A local developer has been working with Saskatoon to come to an agreement on subdividing and purchasing the front half of the property along Centennial Boulevard for the purpose of constructing a commercial structure. The goal of doing this is to utilize land that otherwise would just sit vacant but also create some visual barrier to detract from the appearance of the current tower. The tower will remain and access will be given to it off the future Augusta Boulevard. As mentioned, the subdivision requires an amendment to both of our zoning and official community plans, as well as a motion. Attached some information for council's review. We received no comments during the advertising period for either of these bylaws and I've provided three recommendations for council's consideration tonight.
Okay, so number one, is it council to hold public hearings for bylaw 2019-07, followed by the second and third reading? Okay, so I guess do we have a motion for...
Second reading?
Yes, for second reading.
Motion, the bylaw 2019-07 be read for the second time.
Okay, a seconded for that. Council Beck, is there any comments?
I just do have a question. The Chair, do you have any building hate concerns for, you know, for let's say what it is that we are, you know, say approving?
We would typically deal with that at the building permit stage or development permit stage. We have no exact information yet on the exact type of building that would be built there. However, we do have some maximum height requirements under our zoning bylaw and anything at that or below that would be more than compatible with the adjacent tower.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, motion that's third reading?
I'll hold it.
Oh, sorry, all in favor? And then motion that's third reading?
That bylaw 2019-07, a bylaw to amend the official community plan, this amends the changes of the land use designation map referred to in bylaw number 2018-05 by re-designating a part of parcel A, Plan 90S 31516 from urban holdings to commercial, be read a third time and passed and that the bylaw 2019-07 now be adopted, sealed and signed by the mayor and the city clerk.
Do we have a seconded for that? Council Phil Chuck, is there any comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that one's done. Okay, a motion to have a second reading for the next?
The bylaw 2019-06 be read a second time.
Okay, do we have a seconded for that? Council Schramm, is there any comments? Okay, all in favor? Motion that's three readings? Pretty bothering, I guess.
Like the motion that bylaw 2019-06, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2018-06, the zoning bylaw be amended by rezoning a part of parcel A, Plan 90S 31516 from UH Urban Holding to C2 Commercial Shopping Center, be read for the third time and passed and that bylaw 2019-06 now be adopted, sealed and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Okay, do we have a seconded for that? Council Schramm, is there any comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, number three, council pass a motion approving the subdivision of part of parcel A, Plan Number 90531516 and part of LS 16, Section 1, TWP 39, Range 5, W 3rd Meridium. Do we have over there? Council Jones?
I'll move for the subdivision of part of parcel A, Plan Number 90S 31516 and part of LS 16, Section 1, Township 39, Range 5, West of 3rd Meridium.
Do we have a seconded for that? Council Schramm, is there any comments? All in favor? Okay, boy, those are...
Yeah, this would be nervous the night.
Okay, is that's it for your report?
That's it for planning, thank you.
Okay, moving on to city manager.
So some information provided related to the city's lagoon. At the present time, the city does not have a policy in place regarding charging of fees for the use of the city lagoon. In the past, we have allowed companies to utilize the lagoon for discarded affluent and wastewater. After some discussion, it was decided that a policy should be created to both regulate what can and can't be dumped in the lagoon, as well as a review for potential future fees in terms of charging companies that want to dump within the lagoon. Some information was provided there on other fees around the province. Some different options have been provided. At current, what we're, I think, looking for from administration or what administration's recommendation is, is that we take a look at adopting this policy. What this policy will do is regulate who can dump in the lagoon. The intent of the policy is to ensure that no one outside of city boundaries would be dumping any affluent in the lagoon. However, we are requesting that some more time be given in terms of looking at a fee structure for any potential future dumping. So at the present time, we're just asking for a council review on the policy that's been attached for your information.
Do we still leave a motion for that?
I will make the motion. So I'm gonna move that we adopt the P40-2019 Lagoon Operations Policy and that the policy comes into force and effect on May 31st, 2019. And I'm gonna add a little thing here and I'm gonna say "as amended." I did notice one change that actually doesn't need to be made and I did not get that to Bob earlier today. So, I take it that after we pass it, then I'll speak to what needs to be amended.
Okay, so do we have a seconded for that? Council Peterson, comments?
Yeah, so this here, so the, this is under Section 8 of the policy, so this is the very last page. The official location shows as Section 39 of Township 38 and it should be Section 32.
Oh.
Because there's only 36 sections in a township. So, yeah, with this here, if we could just go back. And I am sorry that I didn't get back to administration earlier today. I talked to Bob about quite a few things, but that was not one of them, so.
Okay.
I'm not happy to make that change.
Okay, any other comments?
Just one question about this. Have we reached out at all to people that's willing to affect it? Like I know right now it's preliminary, we don't have fees, but I think...
Yeah, there has been some discussion both with the company that discharges the affluent and there's really only one company in town right now that was discharging material in the lagoon that we didn't find acceptable and that was some of the grit and stuff caused from a car wash and their traps that are intended to catch it. So we have had some discussions with them. Everyone seems to be understanding of kind of the intent behind the policy and what the city's trying to, I guess, prevent for future maintenance requirements.
Okay, so no surprises?
No surprises and everyone seemed willing to work with the new policy.
Council Schramm?
The fee structure will be in place before the end of the month that this policy takes place, is that correct? So we'll come again next?
I'm not sure exactly on a timeline for the fee structure at this point. I know they were doing a bit of a review. I think the intent behind some of the review and fees was, there's a bit of, we want to ensure that we're not double dipping. If we're charging a company to discharge the affluent into the lagoon, we want to ensure that that fee's not, we're not then charging the person whose business is actually hiring the company to discharge the affluent as well. So there's a bit of a review happening there at this point and I don't have an exact timeline. I'm not sure if Jason has an exact timeline on the fee review, but I think the intent would be to bring something back to council as quickly as possible.
So yes or no to the end of the month?
I'd say the end of the month is probably a little bit ambitious. It wouldn't change, really, we're not changing any of our procedures from what we currently do in terms of charging. This is just to regulate, costing this policy is just to regulate what can be dumped in there. So we're not really changing any of our policies related to fees or anything differently from what we do now. This would just be to regulate what gets dumped in there. So that fee review, even if it comes at a later date, you know, it's not necessarily, I guess we're still helping the lagoon in terms of what would be dumped in there during that period.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you, that concludes my report for today.
Okay, maybe next one?
Community Mayor Spence of council. Including Appendix A is a property tax of arrears listing as of May 7th, 2019. The properties listed have arrears balances in excess of one half of the 2018 levy. As per the P36, 2017 Tax Enforcement Policy, administration has exempted those properties with arrears less than one half of the 2018 levy. Tax enforcement on these properties will include mailing letters, advertising in the local paper and post can copy in the municipal office, as well as adding associated costs to municipal tax arrears accounts and applying tax liens to those properties still having remaining balances six days after the tax enforcement advertising and mailing process. Appendix B lists properties that have previously registered tax liens. Since placement of these liens, administration has been in contact with many of the properties on the tax enforcement list and many arrears balances have been paid and removed from the listing in accordance with the city's tax enforcement policy. However, several properties remain on the tax enforcement list as represented in Appendix B. A motion of council is required at a regular meeting of council to authorize the finance manager to proceed to require title in accordance with Tax Enforcement Act. This motion authorizes the city to serve a six-month notice, Form C, on the property, which includes mailing of the notices to the assessed donors and all parties on title and adding associated fees to the bill. After serving the six-month notice, the next step is requesting consent to make final application of title from the provincial mediation board.
You have a recommendation in front of us there? Do we have a mover for that recommendation? Council Phil Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion that the tax arrears listings in Appendix A be approved at this regular meeting of council, allowing the city treasurer placed liens on those properties greater than one half of the 2018 levy in arrears.
Please, seconded. Council Schramm, is there comments? Council Schramm?
Just the term "city treasurer," is that the finance manager or is that someone else?
Yeah, the finance manager has been appointed as a city treasurer.
Okay, I just, does that need to be made? That doesn't need to be clarified in the motion?
No, because she was appointed already.
With some of these, these ones that we're applying for, or given the six-month notice for, has, like, are there current properties that we've gone through all the procedures and actually have taken title?
Never, no. So right now, we do have five properties that did go to the provincial mediation board and of those, two were paid out prior to there being an agreement made by the provincial mediation board and the provincial mediation board assisted in creating agreements with the property owners. So that's as far in the process as we have gone.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have a question. What does a levy mean?
A levy is the taxes for the year. So the tax is owed, that's the levy.
And how does a six-month notice work?
So we serve a six-month notice. So basically, essentially what we're saying is you have six months to pay your taxes, otherwise we move forward with the tax enforcement process to the next step.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we have another recommendation. Council Schramm?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the city treasurer to proceed to require title on those properties listed in Appendix B at this regular meeting of council, including serving the six-month notice, Form C, in accordance with the Tax Enforcement Act.
To the seconded, Council Peterson, is there any comments? All in favor? Thank you. Can we give a motion to file administration reports? Council Phil? A seconded, Council Tully, all in favor? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, moving on to council committee reports, starting with my own. So I have, there is no recommendations, resolutions needed on my report. It's all purely information and there's a lot of information on there this time and dates. There is one correction to be made. Thank you, Council Phil Chuck, for bringing that up to my attention and that is Thursday, May 22nd, that should read May 23rd, because that's the day it is, for the Prairie Sky Power Hour in Martinsville. That's actually May 23rd, not May 22nd, just so that you know. Does anyone have any questions on my report? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to student council.
I only have a few things to tell on the report today. Students are gonna be having a fun night on the week on the 2nd. I went to three different schools and wanted to get the posters, so hopefully we get a big turnout. If any kids, please bring them out. Students are gonna be having their retreat today, tomorrow and the day after. Then also on that point, this weekend is a long weekend due to Victoria Day and PD Day at the school, so it's gonna be extra long. All the kids outside, hopefully. More minds are crazy about it again. Referees have gotten their schedules for this term, so I'll figure, we'll see if we play softball during the afternoon. And kids have been going on the bikes, so I was at the bike party this morning in the afternoon teaching them bikes. So it was a big turnout.
Well, I know, every year there's more and more kids. Well, good to be for being there. I know I couldn't make it and I know Council Peterson couldn't either, so. Does anyone have any questions of Kenji? Left two, your fun night, what exactly, what happens, like what's planned?
So it's like a bunch of carnival games, like inside the school, so you can play like brain toss, like this is a little fun game for youth kids to play, so.
And so does the SRC then kind of man all the stations?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just, there's no teachers involved or anything. It's just maybe just night or just softball.
So you guys do all the planning?
Yeah.
Oh, great. And how many students are going on the retreat?
Around thirty to forty.
Oh, wow. Any teachers on that one?
Two, three teachers.
Okay, any parents?
Four, yeah, four teachers. I'm not sure of the parents. Pretty sure my parents go there.
Good time. Okay, can we have a motion to file both the mayor's report and the student council representative report? Council Peterson?
That the mayor's and the student council's reports be accepted as presented for May 13th, 2019.
And do we have a seconded? Council Beck, any questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, council roundtable, starting with Council Beck.
Well, the last couple of weeks have actually been fairly busy. On the week of April 25th, along with Mayor Spence, I did attend the Sridea event in Saskatoon. And that was certainly well, you know, certainly well-hosted and if there's any, you know, one, you know, one thing that I could draw from the, you know, from the theme that was presented, you know, to share with council here, and that is, one of the things that Sridea had certainly recommended is to essentially look at everything that you do, as in your writing, you know, it's like, you know, like the headline that you want to see in the next periodical paper that, you know, that you might receive. So in other words, you know, basically this year, you know, you know, basically have that dream or that goal that you want to attain or certainly attribute to the organization that you represent and whatever that, that positive news headline is going to be, you know, to basically, you know, you know, to endeavor to make that happen each and every day. And, you know, certainly by, you know, by doing that, then, you know, then you can certainly attain, you know, some of the goals that you've set for yourself. So I thought that that was a really good message to, you know, to take away, you know, from the whole entire meeting. I know that there was a lot of information that was, that was certainly presented there and it was certainly done in that upbeat Sridea fashion and I think that's really refreshing to see and, yeah, you know, this year was just a, just a really nice event, you know, to kind of hear about some of the, you know, stories that are going on there. Not just all the good things, but also the challenges and how Saskatchewan's working to certainly overcome that and also like the power of the region. There's a lot of growth that's still happening, even though that, you know, that the general economy out there might be sluggish and there's quite a few questions in terms of world policies and things like that, but there's still positive headlines to be, you know, to be had out there and to certainly strive to make those happen right here in our region. So I wanted to share that, you know, certainly with everybody here. The day after that, April 26th, I was at the Opimohaw Creek meeting. So this, you know, this organization is basically just, you know, certainly revived here just in the past couple of months. And from the information that was done previously and whatnot, we basically worked towards putting in a grant application, you know, you know, so that there was certainly put forward. So with this year, I am told that that was submitted on time and whatnot, so we'll see exactly how that there, you know, certainly gets, you know, gets looked at. May 3rd, I did attend the Wemba- Wemba Awards, that was previously let off there. There again, fantastic event, great opportunity to network with, you know, with the businesses out there and fantastic to see, you know, the turnout there in Werman, or, you know, Bi-Worming there in Martinsville, so. May 8th was our open house and I would like to say that while it felt like our numbers were down, it did feel that quality of conversations did seem to be up there. I know I had, you know, some really good conversations there regarding the organics, the recycling and whatnot. The lawyers, they had brought like those, like those reusable rubber straws and whatnot. And there again, fantastic thing to see, especially with all the headlines out there of, you know, plastics and, you know, out there and the environment and whatnot. So, yeah, certainly nice to see, you know, lawyers kind of respond to some of those news headlines and also to bring that here to Werman, so I wanted to give a shout out to them. Then on May 9th, I did attend the SUMA Sector Meetings in North Battleford and did bring some information back from this. I'm gonna be honest with you, it was really good to, you know, to network with quite a few of the communities out there. We covered off a number of, you know, very important topics and things like that. The, you know, we did have a presentation there from Minister Keating and whatnot. He went through the additional conditions that are going to be accompanying revenue sharing for all communities into the future. So I was gonna list these off because I know I was asked, you know, by a counselor here as to what they were and I didn't have a complete response, so I'm just gonna go through it. First things being the audited financial statements. There again, that's, you know, certainly something there that we, that we achieve here, no problem. The proper water treatment, there again, we're a part of Saskatoon or the Sask Water System, so with that there, we meet. Public disclosure statements, so there again, that's on us all and counselors to certainly read that. And also asset management, council-preparedness bylaws and employee code of conduct. So there again, as long as your municipality is, you know, let's say, abiding by the conditions for revenue sharing, then with this year, you know, you will be getting that. I was actually surprised to see that there are a few communities within my district that don't meet all of these conditions and with this year, certainly gonna work to bring everybody into compliance before this certainly does come forward. SUMA did have a, you know, certainly a recommendation to all communities and that is to certainly, you know, follow through in terms of trying, you know, certainly advocating for the cannabis, cannabis excise tax. There again, this is certainly like an important formula to, you know, to have the province, you know, certainly commit to. With this year, we do see, you know, you know, some of the communities out there, you know, certainly dealing with expenses, but there again, no, no plans on exactly what the revenue side of that is be or certainly like compensation thereof. So I believe at that, at that May 23rd event, I believe Minister Harpower is actually gonna be there. Quite nice to have Minister of Finance there and so with this year, certainly if, if our representatives could bring that forward, that would be great. We had, you know, certainly gone through some of the things about the legislative review. There again, cities and municipal acts are certainly being reviewed out there and whatnot. There's a webinar that SUMA is putting on tomorrow. I do have basically live privileges to that because it did fill up rather quickly, so I will extend to council. I've worked it out with, with Bob and also Dawn to actually host that here. So if there's anybody that's, that's available from 10 to 11 tomorrow, feel free, you can join me here in council and this year we can certainly, we'll go through that. One last thing that I would like to bring up and that is at the event, it was kind of highlighted regarding this and I'm gonna pass this on to our, to our active city manager and I'll send this around for our recreation department lead and that is, there was some interesting information that I'd come across and I didn't catch the whole thing, but anyways, this is about Greenwave Innovations. Apparently with this year, they, they can come down and they can actually review the power consumption within, within specific facilities within, within your municipality. And I heard that this is actually quite beneficial for, let's say, rec centers and that kind of thing because we're actually billed on the peak power pricing. So with this year, they can actually come in and actually recommend how to drop that peak power. So if you drop that, you know, maybe, you know, let's say 10% as to what your, what your maximum peak is, that could actually create some significant savings for, you know, for your community. So I wanted to pass that along and I was told that the SUMA Advantage people were gonna be out either Tuesday or Wednesday here in Werman, so I don't know if they're coming to see recreation or, or here in the office, but I wanted to pass that along so that we can specifically look into those.
When are they coming?
This week.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. Our city manager is not here for Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah, anyways, with this year, I only got it from Lisa Rawlings that, that she was going to be here this week and she had feared that it was Tuesday or Wednesday, she wasn't sure. So, yeah, I'm just going by, by the information, I didn't, I didn't touch that.
We have a managers meeting tomorrow, we'll make sure it gets along.
We have a managers meeting tomorrow. We'll make sure it gets along to the appropriate people for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, you know, just, uh, you know, with this year, one of the things that we did talk about, you know, in terms of our strategic planning, was to do, it looks like, that review for, um, you know, for our different facilities. So if this is something that could be, you know, that can factor into that, if it's not terribly expensive, I think that that might, might draw some benefits out here.
Okay, good. Thank you, Counselor Beck.
Right.
Counselor Jones?
Not as busy, but I'll do my best here. Uh, so did attend the open house. You know, it's the same thing, lots of, uh, lots of interesting conversations. I think just, you know, probably the biggest takeaway for me, and I know every year it's the same, you're there in a, in a big way, but again, how lucky we are to have some volunteer organization have in this community, like work. And that's an outstanding job they do, and some of the specialty, like, you know, if you had a chance to talk to the gentleman about the search dog there. And, uh, you know, that's the only dog like that in Saskatchewan, and he's spending most of the time with that dog in Alberta because there's such a need for the, for the dog there. And, you know, to think that we have things like that here in Mormon for a volunteer organization like where it is, is pretty impressive. So I'm always amazed that, that the people who are willing to go that far to help the community. So kudos to them. It was, it was a good event. Um, also attended Wembecksa. You know, a really, another really good takeaway there was just how well represented Mormon was. You know, I think, I don't know what the percentage would have been, but we certainly in Mormon, a lot of the businesses that were on, were Mormon based businesses. And it was fun to learn a lot and just see all of them, you know, at an event like that, that's a joint, uh, you know, by community event. So, yeah, that's what I've been doing since.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Tully.
I've been at a lot of the same places that we've already been talking about, so I'm not gonna go over them too, too much. But I was at the Wembecks Awards, and very well done, and fantastic representation from Mormon. Uh, the open house, again, lots of good conversations there as well. And beyond that, prior to me coming over to this meeting tonight, I was actually at the Chamber of Commerce, uh, just for their board meeting. And gave them a little bit of an update of a few things going on around, around Mormon. Um, also gave them an update on where we are at, uh, with Economic Development Officer, and that we're still working on, uh, sort of a temporary replacement. I also gave them a bit of an update around the, uh, the tax incentive bylaw, and that we're gonna be opening that up for a review. And we're gonna be inviting them along to the table to have some, some of that discussion. Uh, beyond that, they did ask me a question around, and Brad, I think you're gonna be having a meeting in the near future with, uh, with Jamie?
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, and she's gonna be asking, just if we maintain a list of developers that have leased space available. And if I recall correctly, that is something that Josh did have.
Yeah, we have a bit of an inventory of kind of what's available.
Okay, yeah, because they've been getting, my understanding is they've been getting quite a few questions. Uh, Jamie's been getting quite a few questions, and one of the realtors that's on the board was also in agreement that she's been contacted frequently by folks looking for space too, that are looking for somebody that's sort of a neutral representative as opposed to like one of the leasing agents.
Yeah, we'll be meeting tomorrow, so.
All right. Can you pass that along? Yeah, outside of that, I'm gonna stop there.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peterson?
Well, there's a couple of things I attended that are different than what other people talked about. One was the recreational advisory meeting on the twenty-fourth, which we, uh, made decisions on the community grant. Um, we, we passed out most of it. There were some we kinda, kinda held, held back on, on dispersing just to wait to see if there's any late applications, or if there are other, you know, worthy, uh, groups that, uh, come forward at a later date, uh, so that, uh, we, we have something, you know, in hand if that happened. And the discussion we had around, around that, uh, you know, the participation in, in decision-making, that was a really good discussion, as I pointed out in the, in the email I put out there. Um, and it was, it was a very good, uh, process that we went through to make those decisions. There were, you know, no one was trying to strong-arm anyone else, or, you know, it was, uh, you know, very... I guess it wasn't, it wasn't heartstrings used. It was very, very, uh, very mindful, very, uh, in a large respects logical in the way that decisions were made. So, uh, that, that went really well. And then the Legends Center expansion meeting on the twenty-nine. You know, it's, it's getting, getting down there. They're, they're getting really close to finalizing those plans. And part of that was, uh, they had a meeting with, uh, uh... Or, uh...
AODPT?
No, AODP had a meeting down the street that does all the inspections.
Oh, munich code?
Munich code. Sorry, with munich code. And so there was, there was one thing that was, uh, kinda, you know, brought up that had to make a change. Then there were some decisions that hadn't been made around that. It's, you know, Paul's a little sad to see some of the storage space go, but, you know, necessary to make sure that we have a, you know, good sturdy, safe building, so, um, and that's... I think that process is, uh, moving along, and I think those plans will be ready. I think they were aiming for the end of the month, right? So, um, and it's, you know, it's really, uh, it's really awesome to be part of that process to see the minds that are at that table, and to see how Paul just fits in, and like he's, he's been through this before, and the way he, he is able to direct the questioning, and, uh, he, he doesn't skip a beat when they're talking very specific technical questions. He knows exactly what they're talking about. So I think we're well in hand in that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shannon?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I was at the P four G regional meeting, um, last, uh, yeah, last Thursday, or I guess a week ago, a week and a half ago. Some highlights to that meeting was, uh, we have a new P four G director, Neil Sardicki. It's Arniki. And he comes to us with a regional planning background from the Edmonton Metropolitan Regional Board. And he took on roles of regional projects, and, uh, so he is now, uh, looking after overseeing it all. Uh, we also talked about some boundary alter, alterations, um, that may affect us around our region. And, uh, then also there was some talk of, uh, a development taking place on the south side of the city, which really doesn't affect us, but, um, it does have some precedence in, in working together. So, um, both the RM and the city need to get out, and we'll all be at the table to kind of watch that unfold. But it was a really good meeting, um, and I, I really enjoyed, uh, sitting around the table with, uh, all the other different cities' mayors and so forth. I too want to talk about the open house, only because, uh, my mind was transportation, so I did get a few questions about that. And so, um, I really think maybe administration could look at going through the toolbox, um, on some of our signage, because that was a lot of questions, um, especially when we talk about clubhouse and, uh, the three-way stop just outside of the golf course. Also on Nicholas, I think there's a confusion there, and I couldn't answer the gentleman. So it, uh, I think some of our signage needs to work its way through. And, um, and also if we have results on the clubhouse, uh, speed issue, that's, that's come about at all since...
Um, we have, we are planning on doing, uh, putting our speed sign out there, which calculates data, just to see what the average speed is. And in addition, um, we have taken a look at when we start our regular painting maintenance work this spring of putting in a, installing a crosswalk at that location. We don't feel it's appropriate for, uh, for a four-way stop just because of its location, but definitely the installation of the crosswalk makes sense there.
Right. And I think there's a, you know, a bit of, uh, talk of the new paint for our painting. I think there was excitement there too. So, I mean, I, I thought it was very, very beneficial, but I think that the planning and the transportation aspect always affects a lot of people. I would, I would make maybe a suggestion that maybe, uh, we could bring it more to the Legends at that time of year, so that it would create more, uh, it's more of a hub for people to come and go. And maybe we could think about Legends being a place for it until the next year, that they get more people there or at least exposure to it, so that they could then, you know, crowd crowds it out. So, uh, it's just one of my suggestions. Um, other than that, that's all I have to do. I would love to go to the thing tomorrow, um, the, uh, the SUMA, uh, thing for changing municipal act of the city act. So I'm gonna be there today, tomorrow.
Counselor Philchuck?
Well, I have a few that have already been mentioned. Counselor Tramm is looking over here. Mainly all regional partner themes, and it's sort of right after getting off a plane of ten nights in Europe, and then spending a night in Calgary airports, uh, got right back to it with a P four G meeting. And with that, the only point I want to mention with that is that Neil also invited us, has mentioned that he's gonna meet with each one of us individually to talk about what are our rules, what do we see our rules as far as P four G, and so that's really with the group. So taking that initiative to really get to know us, I, I can see that happening in the near future, and I know he's gonna reach out. Uh, Wembecksa, just again, that idea of partnerships. The part that I noticed there too is how many city councillors I know from Martin'sville now, or how many people I know from other councils that are, uh, over the time, that you go to places like that, that probably in the past, that wouldn't have happened. So again, kudos to, uh, to the chamber. I'm putting on such a classy event. The open house, just mentioning the positive comments we got. I went through all the comments, and it's just a theme of, uh, that small-town feel of our city, and, uh, and so it, it's really good to see that the people coming, you know. Uh, in the past, we've had a little bit more where there's been more complaining, and I'm not sure if it was the good weather or what it was, but it was a chance to talk to many of the partners, again, that whole idea of people that really make our city that are way beyond, uh, you know, City Hall and beyond. So it's, it was good to see. And then finally, just even seeing, uh, seeing in the mayor's report, Tracy Fessig and, and the mayor going together now to these businesses. I just thought that that, again, just exemplifies what's happening in the area, that we're working together to try and get business here in Mormon, so great job.
Okay, and I had my meeting with Neil today, so he's, he's actively doing as what he said he would do.
Excellent.
Okay, so we are at correspondence, and under correspondence, we have the SUMA hometown, um, deserve share of cannabis excise tax letters, CN right-of-way vegetation control notice, the RCMP media releases for April fifteenth, April, and May sixth, two thousand nineteen, and the Prairie Spirit School Foundation annual golf tournament sponsorship letter. So I guess we will start with the share of the cannabis exercise tax. I do have a draft there.
I would move that a letter be sent on behalf of the city of Mormon to Minister of Finance, asking the government of Saskatchewan to begin work immediately on the cannabis excise tax sharing agreement.
Okay, you have a secondary for that? Counselor Beck, is there further discussion?
I just, just one point, that, uh, it was good to see that, you know, this is coming forward, and it's something that, uh, Mormon, City of Mormon brought forward at SUMA right after it was announced. And, uh, even before Mayor Fugere got all the press with it, Mormon sort of pushed it forward a little bit to say that, uh, equalizing, uh, the payments that way. So it's good that this is happening. So fully supported.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? And do we have a motion to file the rest of our correspondence?
Yes, I can do that. Make the motion that correspondence from SUMA regarding hometowns deserve share of cannabis excise tax letters, CN right-of-way vegetation control notice, the RCMP media releases for April fifteenth to May sixth, two thousand nineteen, and the Prairie Spirit School annual golf tournament sponsorship letter be filed for May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and do we have a secondary for that? Okay, Counselor Peterson, do we have further discussion? Is there anything, is there anything anyone wants to speak to? Um, there's also that Prairie Spirit School sponsorship letter. Is there any thoughts there? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Other reports, we have in front of us the Mormon Public Library minutes and financials, the Prairie Rivers Reconciliation Committee minutes, the P R R R C, again, Legends Golf Course Board minute, meeting minutes. Is there someone that wants to file those reports? Counselor Jones?
I'll move to accept the reports from the Mormon Public Library, Prairie Rivers Reconciliation Committee, and the Mormon Legends Golf Course as written.
Okay, and do we have a secondary there? Counselor Philchuck, is there any questions of Counselor Beck?
Yeah. Uh, do you have a question about the, uh, the Public Library Board minutes of March twentieth, twenty nineteen? Um, it, it does mention in there closing the library on the morning of the June twenty-sixth. Obviously, this year, like, there's a bit of an explanation there, um, you know, for, for staff, what they may be doing. But this year, uh, we don't have enough staff to, to keep this open during that time?
Well, I think it was there, I didn't, I haven't looked, but it's, there's two staff members or three staff members that have, uh...
Yeah, well, this year, I'm like, I'm like, the reasoning there, uh, for attending graduations, uh, this year, it like, it doesn't say, um, which, which staff is going to that or whatever, but I'm just kind of surprised that, um, you know, that, that our library would be so, so short-staffed to not being, you know, not being able to cover our hours and actually having to close, uh, you know, uh, for the morning. So it, it actually doesn't give us times that, that would be closed. It just says, close for the morning. So I don't know if it'd be back on at noon or one. Uh, so it's really vague on that, but I wasn't sure.
I think that Tina Wall is going to cover, so in order for her to cover that shift on her own, because the others are all involved in the graduation, it's one of those times, one of those things that happens. Uh, they, to make it work with her hours, they had to close, uh, the morning hours, which is two hours, I think. So, so she'd be able to do the rest of the day. But she will be on twelve, I, I think it is, twelve o'clock till the library closes. So that's the plan for the library there.
I'll bring it up to Paul tomorrow on our managers meeting, and if anything's different, I'll send out an email.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah. Uh, regarding Prairie Rivers Reconciliation Committee meeting of Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty nineteen, it does talk about renaming the Rural Reconciliation Committee. And with this year, it said that it was based on results of a recent... Just out of curiosity, was that internal, or was that, like, were there external stakeholders in that also, or was it just within the body?
It was done at, um, a strategic planning where they, and I think there was probably forty-plus people at the strategic planning meeting, and those are all the members of that committee. Everyone had a chance to weigh in, and they came up with different ideas, and then there was kind of a voting system as we've done in our own strategic planning meetings, and that's the name that was selected. Okay, anything else? Counselor Beck?
One more, different set of minutes. Uh, so this is the Legends Golf Club. So this is the, um, the financials of, uh, March thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Um, in there, it talks about operational rights, um, under capital assets. And I, I don't know, with this year, I'm just not familiar as to what operational rights were, and I don't... Yeah, you can answer that today.
Yeah, so that's what they set up as the offsetting, um, uh, asset to the liability of the loan to KW, to KW.
K.
Sorry, cage. Yeah, so if the loan was there to set up correspondence, what they call is operational.
Gosh, so, yeah, so that's just to balance that off for them. Okay, yeah, and that, that actually makes a lot of sense. Okay. Um, the other thing that, that I did notice was also, um, it, uh, basically mentioned the CRA penalty. And obviously, like, that was new this year and hasn't been there in previous years. I was just kind of curious about that.
Where do you see that?
Uh, this year, yeah, I think it shows up twice, but, uh, this year, the second to last page. So I don't know if there was a disclosure of information for what the penalties were.
I don't recall what that is.
Two, four, six, eight, nine from the, nine from the bottom, penalties from CRA.
Counselor Jones, are you able to maybe get more information and pass it on?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's all my questions.
Anything else for anybody else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to communications.
Good evening. Um, if it's okay, I'll just like to start with two reminders. These letter submissions are due twenty-second. Thank you, Mayor Spence, Counselor Jones, and Counselor Philchuck. I look forward to receiving yours. Second one is June thirteenth for having a staff barbecue, eleven-thirty till one at Lyons Park. And invitation to anyone from council who wants to volunteer and help out, please let me know tonight or you can email or text me. Great if you could. Okay, in terms of my report, start off with a website update. It's been a little slow, but I am moving through the pages and it's, every page I get to, it just seems a little more intense. So my goal is still to be done by the end of the week. We'll see how that happens. Mayor Spence and I have talked about something to add to the website to go along with the business visits that she's doing with Tracy from the Chamber. I don't know if we've come up with a name for it yet, but it would be like a business profile. So we do like a one-hundred, two-hundred-word write-up about the business to go visit. Includes some photos and contact information. And it would be open to all businesses. It would be restricted to anything. So I don't know if anyone has any ideas or feedback on that. Please let me know.
Does anyone have any comments there?
What's the thought, I guess, for how frequently that would be?
Well, we're planning between four and six visits in one. So consider these profiles to run one based on that schedule.
So your spotlight on business, right?
Yeah.
Kind of like the business spotlight that we had a few years ago.
Yeah. Would we, uh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Philchuck?
I was just gonna say, I like the idea that you are giving the business their moment too, like whether it's their website or their address or because it's nice to have a picture there, a little bit more about them and then how you contact them too. Cause many people just don't know those businesses even exist in Warman, so I think that's.
We do have a directory on the website, but it's really impersonal, so this is.
So this would be like extra part. I, so I'd like to see definitely the details of the business when they get their turn.
I was just gonna ask if when when you do that, if you're planning on kind of having that mirrored into the Facebook page as well, so.
Yeah, because definitely the social media.
Every opportunity we can to kind of direct people to the website or direct people to Facebook or vice versa. So that gives a cross promotional opportunity for us and the businesses involved.
Anything else there? Okay, next lady.
So the open house, thank you everyone for giving feedback. I agree, it was not as busy as I was hoping, but talking to the people who came, it was really nice. Like everyone seemed pretty eager to be there. So attached is the survey results. I'm not quite sure if you've had a chance to go through that or if you have any questions based on that.
Any questions about the survey? None? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, uh, no actual questions, but uh, you know, certainly, you know, with with the responses, uh, you know, you know, definitely going through it. You know, I'm like, you can certainly pick up quite a few themes, you know, from that and whatever. And actually, uh, you know, just to kind of comment on on your reports and and the way that it was brought out. With this year, I I do really like the graphs and the charts that you provided, you know, let's say to the questions that, you know, that were there. You know, cause I think that, you know, that does certainly serve as really good information for us going forward. You know, to uh, you know, certainly when 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 we do look at our at our different departments. I do have one question of clarification that is on page eleven. This year, the very last question there, city staff uh provide consistent and reliable information in the chart. In the final uh thing, we show two, but in the graph, we actually show five. So um I was wondering if you'd be able, and obviously you wouldn't be able to do that now, but with this year, if you could just let me know if it was two.
Oh, okay.
So, so yeah, so a bit of a discrepancy on that. But with this year, definitely, you know, the quality of the information there, you know, I think, I think from those survey questions, especially seeing how that that was, you know, let's say, uh, you know, like a general walk-around from, you know, you know, from the community that, you know, that was there. You know, to me, this is really valuable in terms of moving forward and being able to plan the city, so so I do certainly thank you for the information that was provided.
I will fix that up and.
If you just let me know, two or five, that's that's my.
Anything else? Okay, Aaron, did you want to talk about the online, the online portion of the survey?
So, uh, my survey, can you just go back to the friends so we can see the numbers? The survey was online from the sixth to the ninth. And there was twice as many people who completed it online than at the open house. So I was talking to Mayor Spence today and we kind of figured we should just keep it online and keep gathering people's feedback. And what did you guys think about that?
Very good idea.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I think um it'll burn out pretty quick if we don't do something to introduce it. I would guess it'd get buried pretty quick and.
Yeah.
Well, and a lot of times with surveys like this, i- if you're going to keep the energy of them too, it's like, here's what, so what are we gonna do with it? So it's it's nice that we gave you that information, so what's gonna happen? So some, so there almost has to be a bit of a follow-up. So I mean, there's a lot about recreation, but the Recreation Master Plan answered a lot of those questions in so many ways. So and so that coming out will be a highlight to some of the people that definitely had questions in those areas because that was a definite theme there too that, so. And and I would have a timeframe, maybe a month or something, that you bring it up once every week or something and see if you can get more people.
So going off that, um, on the website, we have a polling feature where you can put out a question. Not one to gather feedback, but like a yes, no, maybe. And I'm wondering if that would be something that we could do, put a new question every two weeks or monthly, depending on what information council is looking for.
Going on in the community, something, uh, just a question that might, we might want to gather some of the comments of our residents. And it would only be one question, though?
Yes.
Be one question and then they would, they would weigh into that one question. And I, there's other communities that do use that method and they think it's successful.
So it might be good, cause like one question, you can't lose focus on one question, you know?
I would, I I do think it's good, you know, to your point. If, it's gotta be something we plan on uh action, otherwise it will, you know, cause I've seen that through our work. Came up with a lot of nice to knows and begin with people really like just seeing the results. Eventually if it gets busy and if it's not something that you can see the link between the question, the feedback, and action of some sort, then it disappears pretty quick.
And just the other, the other point with that too is we always have to look at the number that responded to and be careful with that too, that
Yes.
A vocal minority doesn't sort of change too much with that. So I mean, so and I think that will trend that way too, like what is the number of people that actually respond to that question? Is there a way of making sure that one person doesn't ask more once? I guess.
With that way, I'd have to look into it.
I know our school ones we can, but.
So for this survey, that's interesting you bring that up because I have everybody's and it's the same people who are always on social media. So it's kind of like, I think this is good feedback, but it's like a tiny portion of
Yes.
This city.
One piece.
Yeah.
Is that something that I should think about further or?
Yeah, something you can try, see how it goes.
And then you look at the number, I guess, with how engaging it is.
Okay. So also on my report, I did the top three social media posts again. I don't know if you guys find that information useful or interesting. Just let me know or let me know if there's something else you would rather see measured. Were there any comments about the Facebook or Twitter posts?
Anybody? I love them. I I like when we have this information out there. Again, when I go to, when I, when I'm looking at our our neighbors and the information they're putting out, it's, I think it's good to be able to to be able to reach your residents any way you can, get to look at all the, all the avenues. And I think you're doing that, you're giving pieces of information of what's going on. So it's one venue of getting that information out. Anybody else? Counselor Beck?
Uh, yeah, I mean, with this year, it's certainly like the comment that, uh, you know, quite honestly, seeing like the individual stats in terms of what, you know, what the reach is for, you know, for the posts there that we have, I think is is certainly great to see. And it it's nice to kind of quantify, you know, um, what what some of our social media reach is um with each one of these. Because um, you know, like there's times where, oh, you know, like you can say, you know, like was that up on Facebook or 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 let's say through Twitter? But to know that um through the impressions that, you know, that at least the, like the message was, you know, was was certainly out there. And then also this year, you can also quantify that to the number of of, let's say, responses. So obviously here it's shown as post clicks, but with this year, you know, then with this year, you can see that if there is something that, you know, that certainly spikes in comparison to other issues, that, you know, like at least it's quantifiable. And um I I I really like that aspect of things. So for me, I I really do like, you know, seeing it in the way that you've presented it. So um I'd be happy to, you know, like if you, you know, continue to do it. That's my thought.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. And just before you sneak away, Aaron, I'm going back to the barbecue. Does anyone here know that they're going to be attending that barbecue?
I will be attending.
So do we have some volunteers for barbecue?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've done that number of years, so, oh, I would continue to do that.
There you go, two barbecues.
I can't bring my barbecue, my barbecue's to my house, so.
Snake of long hair horse.
And natural gas.
Okay, well, thank you, Aaron. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to file a communication report?
Yeah, I would like to file the communications report. So um a motion that the communications report from May thirteenth, twenty nineteen be accepted as presented.
Do we have a secondary? Counselor Shrum, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, below here we have our city accounts for approval, um, motion.
I'd like that, make the motion that council approves the city accounts presented by checks number nineteen thousand seven hundred ninety-seven, nineteen thousand nine forty-eight in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And the payroll vouchers number eight, seven, eight, one, two, eight, eight, four, six in the amounts of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents for May thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, so it's just, it's um, I just want to make sure mine's correct. It says one, nine, nine, five, six. That's right, if that's what everyone has. It's the end check.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, do we have a secondary for that? Counselor Jones, further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I have one thing. Um, there's a new set tweak designs and signs is in the council.
Yeah, he's.
Should I not stand over?
It's recommended. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, so all in favor? Okay. Come back in. Okay, motion presented. Counselor Jones, sir?
I need to adjourn, May thirteenth, very good meeting, also.
And a secondary for that? Counselor Tingley, all in favor? And counsel, if you could stay back, please. Thank you.